Ready? Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Lakewood City Council meeting for this Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Thank you for all of you who are here tonight and for those of you joining us from home. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell, here.
Councilmember Bowkey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
For its fellow defendants accused, Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Present. Well, thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join us in a moment of silence for those victims and their families from the Minnesota tragic, tragic incident involving young children going to school for the first day, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance Tour Nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you for coming tonight. This is a beautiful, warm, summer sun, sunny evening, so we appreciate your opportunity to spend some time with us. We start tonight's meeting with proclamations and presentations, and the first is a proclamation declaring September 11, 2025, as Patriot Day and a day of remembrance here in the city of Lakewood. And for this, I'd like to call on our own Chief Jim Sharp from West Pierce Fire and Rescue and Chief Patrick Smith here from the Lakewood Police Department to receive a proclamation representing our first responders for this day of remembrance. This is our 24th year issuing proclamations to remember a terrible tragic day that many of us here remember, and some of us here are too young to remember. But it's important to recall and to honor the sacrifices of so many. Whereas on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 men, women, and children who were going about their normal routines were taken from us, depriving their families and loved ones of a lifetime of precious moments. And whereas in the years that follow, we worked to rebuild our nation more sound and resilient than ever before, united and determined to strengthen our country's character with acts of endurance and hope, renewal, and progress. And whereas the pain inflicted on our nation on September 11 was felt by people of every race, background, and faith. And though many young Americans have grown up without knowing firsthand the horrors of that day, their lives have been shaped by it. And whereas the compassion that rose in the hearts and minds of the American people following September 11 serves as the ultimate rebuke on those who wish evil on this great nation, and whereas first responders who risked and gave their lives to rescue others demonstrated the unwavering heroism that defines our country. And whereas on Thursday, September 11, 2025, at 5:30 PM, the public is invited to attend a remembrance ceremony at West Pierce Fire and Rescue Station Number 31, reflect on this 23rd anniversary of the attacks, the lives lost, and to pay tribute to the families who still live with extraordinary pain. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim September 11, 2025, as Patriot Day and Day of Remembrance here in the city of Lakewood. And we urge all residents to observe a moment of silence to honor the innocent victims who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks of September 11, 2001, and to observe this day with remembrance and honor of those individuals. Proclaim the second day of September, 2025, all of us here on the Lakewood City Council. So Chief Sharp and Chief Smith, it's an honor to present you with these proclamations, and I know you will have words to share at the Day of Remembrance, but feel free today. Do you have a few seconds or?
Well, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of council, I've said this before, and I will continue to say it every year, I thank you. I thank you for taking the time to recognize those lives lost, those families that were hurt and traumatized at that event on September 11. There were 343 firefighters lost that day. It was a tragic loss for the fire service, and it was painful for anyone that works in the service. It was painful for police officers, for Port Authority, for military personnel at the Pentagon, but as the mayor said, there were 3,000 lives lost that day, or just shy of that, and they were mothers, fathers, children, and friends. They were all important. It's not just about those that were in uniform that day. It's about all the innocent lives that were lost as well, and all the families that were fractured and hurt and traumatized because of it. So to take the time and recognize that every year is really, really important, and not only to myself, but to everyone, because this is about everyone, uniform, civilian, and community. And I really appreciate that you still take the time out of your day to acknowledge this and the importance that it means to all of us. I hope we never forget. Thank you very much.
Basically what he said. I think it's tremendously important that we remember everyone who lost their lives on that day, not just them, but their families, the children who were without a mom, a dad, brother, or sister. It isn't just about the fire department or the police department, it's about people, people who went about their daily lives on a day just like today. There was nothing expected. They weren't looking for anything, they were just going about their daily lives. And one of the major, well, basically the largest terror attack on our soil occurred on that day, and we should never forget them. We should never allow ourselves to become so complacent that we never stop seeking, working, and trying to protect and to help each other. Let's put aside many of the differences that exist in society today and focus on those who lost their lives just going about their daily lives. I thank you for the proclamation. I thank you for recognizing those who endured so much, and we greatly appreciate it all over the place. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, and for this, I'll call on Sylvia Estrella, Laura Martinez, Darrell Owens, and the Fiesta de la Familia Committee, along with Gracia Torres with American Lake Credit Union to receive the proclamation. I think we have an event this coming Saturday, is that right, Councilmember Bell?
We do. We have an event Fiesta de la Familia at Fort Silicon Park, starting at 12, and it ends 6:00. So I look forward to seeing everybody there. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I want to hear definitely a few words from this amazing team that puts on this amazing event that has grown year after year. All right. So, whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans represent the largest minority group in the United States, with more than 65 million residents in Lakewood, more than 12,500 people of Hispanic or Latino heritage call our city home and have helped build and strengthen our community for generations at every level. And whereas, we proudly celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, an observation that began in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17, 1988, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, programs, and revisiting our history. And whereas, from September 15 through October 15, we give special attention to honor the invaluable ways Hispanic and Latin Americans contribute to the fabric of our community by celebrating our common goals, learning about their diverse cultures, and working toward a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs that make our nation great, while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas in Lakewood, Hispanic and Latin Americans are a significant and fast-growing demographic, representing the largest minority group, and their contributions to the city are invaluable through small business ownership, volunteerism, and workforce support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim September 15, 2025, through October 15, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourages our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans at our Fiesta de la Familia event on Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Fort Silicon Park. Proclaim the second day of September, 2025, Mayor Jason Whalen and Lakewood City Council. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you. You guys have done an amazing job putting on this and making it grow year after year, and I love the extra support that we're getting from local businesses. So if you want to say a word, that would be great.
Hi there. My name is Laura Martinez, and I'm a member of the Lakewood Art Commission. And on behalf of the Art Commission, I would like to present the city council with an orange marigold in honor of the Hispanic Heritage Month. And the marigold is a sacred flower used to guide spirits of the deceased to the living world. Its vibrant color symbolizes the sun and life, and its fragrance acts as a pathway to souls to find the altars of loved ones. We'll have an ofrenda, which is an altar, at the Fiesta de la Familia this Saturday, and you're welcome to bring it, and hope to see you then. I also have some Mexican chocolate. I don't know if you've ever had that, but it's really good. It's got cinnamon and sugar, and traditionally, it comes in a block that already has everything together, but I found some instant, and so just.
We're all about chocolate here. It's absolutely fine.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you, council, for having us and for proclaiming this event for us and for the month being Hispanic Heritage Month. We're so excited about this year's Fiesta. This is our fourth one, and it's growing every year, and it's so important. This year is probably the most important one, I think, given the climate that we're in right now. And Hispanics are so important to the United States, not just Lakewood, but the United States. We, as the people, contribute a lot. If you ever enjoy Mexican food, that's us. If you ever enjoy vegetables that you get at the grocery store, that's us. It takes all of us, not just Mexican. It takes all cultures. Diversity makes up the United States. It's important. So this year, it's truly important, and I thank you for allowing us another year of having the Fiesta that celebrates families, not just Hispanic families, it's for everyone. And so we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gracia Torres. I am really pleased to be here today to represent the Hispanic community and our community as Lakewood. Here, I work with American Lake Credit Union. It's our local credit union, and we are here to support the Fiesta de la Familia, and I'm just really delighted to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I am here always to help out the community and represent everybody in Lakewood. Thank you.
Well, next, we are pleased to have our youth council report, the first one of our calendar year 25, 26 students. So come on up, youth council members, Elijah, Stana Anna, Iri Henkel, Natalie Lopez, and Antonio Lanier, if I mispronounce it.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council. I hope you guys are having a wonderful evening tonight. My name is Elijah Stana, and I am the chair for this year's youth council. So far, we've had a pretty productive start to the year. We elected a new council board in June, and we've had a busy end to the summer. Elijah, Chair, and Iri, my co-chair, my two secretaries, Zoe and Estrella, in the stands. And we have a treasurer, Antonio, and our communications manager, Nat. And we've spent the last two months working with Shannon in three meetings to settle the new manual, organize the first agenda, and most importantly, the youth council kickoff event. We had about 35 students show up, with Deputy Mayor Mary Moss and Councilmember Patty Bell appearing to represent the city council. Both veteran members and new members were able to interact through icebreakers like Would You Rather and Speed Networking, which was a competitive version of speed dating. Also, we walked them through the manual and gave them a glimpse of what to expect as a member of the council. To anyone who's unfamiliar with our work, we're a group that works closely with the city council to engage the Lakewood youth in civic activities, develop leadership skills, and make a positive impact on the community. And we represent Clover Park School District and also some schools outside of our own district. And today, we hit off our first meeting of the year with our biggest youth council to date, which is almost 60 people. And now I'll hand the mic over to my co-chair, Iri, to talk about how much our council has grown.
Hello, Mayor Jason Whalen and Deputy Mayor Mary Moss and the rest of council. It's lovely to be here today. I'm Iri Henkel, and I'm this year's youth council vice chair. And I just want to add on and show how much we have grown as a council in just these last nine years of records. In the last nine years, there has been an average of 28 members per year, which is about the average high school class size, I would say. In just those nine years, from the year 2017 to 18, to this year, 2025 to 26, youth council membership has increased by roughly 155%. Membership has grown at a compound annual growth rate of about 12.3% per year in the last nine years. Our lowest membership year was in 2021 to 22 due to COVID. Yet despite that loss, we quickly bounced back and went from 23 members the year prior, 16 the year of, and 21 the following year. We've seen the most growth within this last year, with a jump from 34 members last year to 56 this year. This growth can be attributed to many things, one of those being improved structure and rule enforcement in the meetings, student enthusiasm at our events and our volunteering, increased attendance at the annual youth empowerment summits, where students were strongly encouraged to become a member, a more visible impact that we've had on the community through our volunteering, acquiring more required volunteer events that we must attend, and community and especially council support. Those are all what we can attribute our growth to. And I'll hand the mic to our communications manager, Natalie. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may have to put this down, I'm a little short. Okay. Good evening, Jason Whaling and Mary Moss, Deputy Mayor, and good evening to all you guys. I am the communication manager for the 2025, 2026 council year, and I'm just here to explain the communication methods we are using. As Iri stated, we bounced from a high amount of numbers. So from past council years, we decided to keep going with GroupMe as we received good feedback, and everyone from the past year voted on to continue using it. And yeah, that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Jason Whalen and Deputy Mayor Mary Moss. I'm Antonio Lanier, I'm the Lakewood Youth Council Treasurer, and I'll be talking about our future in the youth council. Going forward with the future, we are going to continue our involvement to better our youth and involve our youth in these volunteer events to better our community. We plan to involve ourselves in the Truck and Tractor Day coming up and Christmas Parade. We also, we hope with our involvement in the council, to see our youth prosper even after we have graduated. As we speak, the youth council is planning their engagement with the community all around Lakewood, and that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, great. Well, I really appreciate all of you and the entire council for your work plan and your involvement in the community and your dedication to kind of staying in touch even after you term my end. I just want to tell you that this summer, I had coffee with two veteran youth council members that are now in college, and it's great because they come back and they connect with us still. And they want to kind of go out and have a cup of coffee and explain the cool things that they're doing with their lives and what they're hoping to accomplish with their own education and their career paths, and it's just wonderful to see that. So feel free, you're a member of the Lakewood family now, so you're always welcome to touch base with any one of us, and certainly Shannon can set up some fun events for us. I think we did a Day in the Life thing with a couple council members in years past, and that would be a fun thing to do too, so as time permits for you. But anyway, any thoughts or comments, Councilmember Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here and giving us the start of the year to be able to go and do this. But I did have one question. When we began this meeting this evening, the mayor asked us all to have a moment of silence regarding the folks that were affected in Minneapolis by the events that were there. And I am wondering how either amongst the youth council or within the youth within your schools, what is the conversation or the view about what happened that's going on? And how is it affecting young people in our community, the fact that although it didn't happen here, that it did happen?
I guess about the shooting in Minneapolis?
Yes.
Yeah. It's definitely worrying to, because school is something that we all have to go through, and to think of that place as like something that's not safe is definitely something that we've all worry about, because we just, of course, we just want to see our friends, we just want to get an education, and it definitely is a worry. Like, it's a heavy breath, kind of, just like to accept that this could, we could be like the next, basically. Yeah.
Well, I guess my question would be, is there anything that comes to mind that you would like the community or the city council or that to do to be supportive in prevention, I hope, of anything like that happening here?
One thing I know that has recently helped to aid in prevention is the clear bag policy at the, I'm not sure of the exact name, but at the local football stadium at Clover Park High School. And I think something else that may help prevent situations and incidents like the Minneapolis shooting might be like more discussion on the topics and especially on mental health and the strength and importance of community, if that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you for sharing.
Well, we appreciate your work. Deputy Mayor, did you have something to say? Thanks again for coming. Any homework from the first week? All right, just checking. Thanks again, thanks, Shannon. Yep. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are now at the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Please note, there is a public hearing on the regular agenda. It's the first item, so if you are here for the public hearing, which is the ordinance, public hearing on the ordinance amending chapter 3.38 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to surface water management, and I think there's at least one person who signed in, but perhaps doesn't wish to speak, but if you're here for the public hearing, hold your comments to that section of the agenda when we get to it. But this is the portion of the meeting tonight for public But this is the portion of the meeting tonight for public comment, which may be accepted by mail, email, or live virtual in-person comment. Any comments that you wish to submit in advance may be emailed to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us or by mail at six thousand Main Street Southwest in Lakewood. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to all of us electronically. But for purposes of our record, we ask that the clerk read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor, we've received written comments in advance from David Oaks and Karen Winter.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on those items pertaining to city business under this public comment section of the agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. We simply ask that you approach the microphone. Please state your name and residence of record, such as Paul Bokey Lakewood, Washington. And then the clock will turn and you'll have your three minutes. Virtual comments are certainly welcome. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comment, please join us in the Zoom meeting room as an attendee by dialing two five three two one five eight seven eight two. Enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. And upon entering the room, use the raise the hand feature to be called upon. So I will first call on those who have raised their virtual hand to speak, followed by those who are in the room that have signed in on the sign-in sheet. I rotate every other week. So first we'll call on those who are appearing via Zoom. Madam Clerk? We have Mr. Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. He used to be a resident of Lakewood. So you never know when you're talking to a group from a few of the different cities.
Yep, we can hear you now, Mr. Haugen. Go ahead.
Okay. You never know when you're talking to a group of people that are in sanctuary cities because the thinking is so different. But anyway, just this in the last couple of weeks, it was kind of a shocker. A truck driver, see, the CDL truck licenses are basically state and federal. The federal part is usually interstate and it's upon the states to enforce those regulations. So a driver just a couple of weeks ago gets in an accident in Florida. He got in his CDLs for both California and Washington. He was not a citizen. He could barely read and write. And then he killed three people. And then to, as he got reading into it, you begin to see that there's been cases of bribery and all kinds of things going on right here in Washington, Oregon, and California. It's just absolutely insane with today's modern trucks that anybody should be allowed to drive them that can't read, is not on drugs. Absolute muss. I got my first commercial license over sixty years ago, but in those days, the trucks didn't have a lot of power. Nowadays, they run eighty miles an hour with up to one hundred and thirty-five thousand pounds. And there's nothing to fool with. In fact, they can do as much damage to a building as a bomb can, and I've seen that. And of course, Pam Bondi at about the same time, Attorney General of the United States had written a letter to Governor Ferguson wanting him to explain some of his behaviors that were thought to be getting in the way of the federals who are out to arrest. Illegal, illegal. Came in the country not following the law. Some of them are very bad and some of them not. Well, his response wasn't to give his legal opinion. No, he starts talking about bully, bully, bully. Trump's a bully. Trump's a bully. This guy's, in my opinion, your governor is a punk. And you need to get him unelected as quickly as you can because he's not going to do you any good, any way, shape, or form. If he doesn't respect federal law. Thank you.
Next, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop and I'm a resident of Lakewood. And I wanted to talk about Oaks. I think I talked about Oaks last time. And I think, you know, in terms of Lakewood and its tree canopy, you know, people talk about tree canopy in general, it being a good thing to have. And we talk about the urban forestry and we have targets for the urban canopy, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ahead. But it doesn't seem to me that the city is really taking oak trees very seriously. And, you know, one has to think about targets for, you know, how many oak trees does Lakewood want to have, say, in a hundred years' time? Because I know that a hundred years' time is a long time to think about. But, you know, an oak tree takes centuries to reach maturity. And every oak tree is irreplaceable. I understand, for example, with this walkway between sort of Tillicum and Lakewood, there's an oak tree that's going to be cut down, which is over five hundred years old because it's in the way of a path. You know, that tree is irreplaceable. And, you know, last time, I think it was a meeting before last, you know, the mayor, you know, perhaps somewhat facetiously pointed out that, oh, yeah, there was a tree that, you know, oak trees aren't always good. They can fall down and people can get hurt. And yes, it's true that branches can suddenly fall and there can be little warning. And I think it's important that people in Lakewood have some education about trees. But, you know, education works in many different ways. I mean, trees have to be respected. And the oak tree, you know, it might not be, seem to be a protected species. If you look up Gary Oak on Wikipedia, it will say that it's of least concern. But the reality is that the oak canopy, you know, the oak number of oaks in the area compared with, say, you know, a hundred years ago or more is, you know, is a fraction, one percent or, you know, something like that of what it used to be. And I think it's important that Lakewood has some idea about what is happening to its oaks. And it's no good just thinking about, you know, Stillicum Park. Yeah, Stillicum Park, you can largely, you know, look after your oaks. That doesn't stop oak trees getting cut down in Fort Stillicum Park, so it can happen there. But, you know, outside Fort Stillicum, that's not the only place you herd your oaks. And you need to, you need to have an inventory, I believe, somehow. I know it's difficult. The LEEDAR technique is, doesn't, as far as I know, is no good at isolating tree species. And so I think Lakewood needs to have goals about oak canopies, not just canopies of trees in general. It is the city tree. And I think that Lakewood really does need to address this problem for future generations.
Next, T. Homier Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is T. Homier Dunlop and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I'd like to make a comment about the gravelly thorn connector alongside the highway that is currently under construction by the Washington Department of Transportation. Hundreds of trees are being cut down to make this path. As someone who's on the Ad Hoc Tree Committee, it's shocking to see what's happening. It's just absurd seeing that an entire strip of trees, including one massive oak tree that is around five hundred years old, a Gary Oak, is being cut down for a path next to a golf course that is full of just empty grass. Why not eminent domain that land to make the path instead? What about no net loss? I understand that this is not being done. I understand that, you know, this is being done by the, by WashDOT and maybe technically this is not under the jurisdiction of Lakewood. But as a part of the Ad Hoc Tree Committee, a couple of years ago or whenever that was, one of the, one of the things, if I remember correctly, we talked about was making sure that utilities, et cetera, would have to follow Lakewood's tree code. What happened to no net loss? I heard that there, for remediation, they're planting two Gary Oak saplings for every Gary Oak that they're going to cut down, including this five hundred year old one. And that's just simply not enough. Remediation means guaranteeing what was lost is going to be replaced. Nobody's guaranteeing that those two saplings are going to be cared for for the next a hundred years, let alone the next five hundred years, until they get to be the size of the five hundred year old one they're going to cut down. It's not like it's a pine tree or a poplar tree that reaches maturity in a couple decades. Like, you know, if you cut down a pine tree and if you plant a couple pine trees, it's not really a big, you know, it's not a huge loss because if you wait thirty years, they grow really quickly. And then in thirty years, you've got a, you've got a replacement pine tree. I remember when we, when we moved into our house, there were a couple of young fir trees that were growing by, by the road ten years ago or whatever, and now they're almost twenty feet tall. It's really impressive how fast they grow. But I've seen young Gary Oak trees that are just as old and they're still basically just a twig. It's just, it's really incredible how long it takes for them to grow. But it's just really sad to see that they're, they're cutting down trees that can't be replaced in human time scales. Yeah, I think that's, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Haley Ivy is next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. This is Haley Ivy, resident of Memphis, Tennessee. I'm hoping to make a home in Lakewood very soon. So I'm concerned about the I-five gravelly thorn connector. I oppose the extending of I-five for an HOV lane, which does not address the issue at the source of traffic congestion. What it does is create more room for more traffic, more cars. I oppose the cutting down of three hundred and ninety-four trees to make way for this road widening and this quote-unquote walking path, which they mentioned is sizable enough for more vehicles. And I know that they say emergency vehicles, but this just sounds like an entirely new car lane to me because who's going to want to walk on this road when it's right next to an interstate and there's no canopy above? So you're just walking in the hot sun. I don't know who's walking on this. There are supposedly protected species of tree here, some over five hundred years old, which are potentially the only source of wildlife, but lives in these trees. It's a sense of beauty that we have left in the state of Washington. It's shade, it's oxygen, it's habitat for wildlife. It's very important for our ecosystem. And because these trees are huge, it was already said that trees do, they will not grow back to the size in our lifetime or our children's lifetime or the next children's lifetime. WashDOT claims that they care about protecting trees, but why do they feel the need to say that? If they really cared, they should not be cutting hundreds of them down to make way for more cars. This sounds like another car lane. This just sounds like another way to let clear cutting keep happening because it's not even just about this part. It's about saying no to more clear cutting because it's just going to be more and more and more. And you can say that we have plenty of trees, but we are not going to have plenty of huge, large trees left if we cut down hundreds of trees. There are more projects that I've heard of where there, it's involved in cutting more trees. And we need to say no more to cutting down hundreds of trees for two more car lanes, by the way. This is not a walking path for the pedestrians. This is an emergency vehicle lane that could potentially be just another lane because it doesn't seem like that the issue of traffic congestion is being taken care of at the source. So instead of pouring all of this money into widening the lanes, why don't we look at public transportation or other avenues that are best for every single life that has to experience? I don't want to experience more road. I don't want to experience more cars. I need the wildlife. I need the shade. I need the trees. I need the beauty in my eyes. And I need, I need it to be respected in a city I care about. And it's very important, very beautiful stuff. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Bye.
That is the last individual who has a hand raised to provide public comment virtually, unless I'm missing anyone. Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll turn to those who've signed in on the public comment sign-in sheet. The first is David Oaks. Strokes? Followed by Karen Winter.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is David Oaks. I live in Lakewood. My home is off of Interlock and off of Washington Boulevard. A couple of months ago, I needed a call for services. I have a medical alert bracelet. And I didn't know that it had been activated. And I got a letter after the event, a couple of days following, from the Lakewood Police Department saying that I had an unregistered home security device and I needed to submit a remittance to a third-party corporation in Texas. Now, I have on the first thing on my notes is I wanted to have a tone of positivity, but I don't think I'm starting that way, so I want to apologize. And I think the two things that were noted, these proclamations before I got to this podium, are absolutely great. But I lost a lot of my audience and I would like to say mi casa es su casa. And I hope they feel like this town is their town. But when I needed services from the Lakewood Police Department, I received my notification on Saturday. The office was closed. I went there Monday and the person that was the point for this security system registration was not there. I left the paperwork and the documents with the office. I never heard back. I did hear back from the third-party administrator in Texas saying that the issue was resolved. That's all I heard from my government. Nothing. Now, two months has passed. I heard nothing last month. This month, I got another letter that says you have an unregistered security device in your home. My goodness, this is not resolved. So Monday, or this morning, I went down again to the police department, spoke to the people that were there. And the interface was much better. This is not meant to be negative or accusatory. It was my experience solely, and I hope it's seen more as a positive critique. When I walked in, I again had the paperwork, again referring to the third-party administrator in Texas, but with the letterhead Lakewood Police. We don't deal with that. That's not our issues. You need, you need to call them. I think I would be willing to pay the extra dollar in taxes to keep our services here at home. Last thing I have to say is as a mortal human being, I would like to request to be, have an internment at the Old Settler Cemetery for my family had her heritage off of Washington Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Karen Winter.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for letting me bring a concern. My sister and I are regular walkers every day. I did send an email with comments a year ago and unfortunately not really seeing a big change, even though we put in all these wonderful safety, you know, crosswalks with lights, sidewalks. But the, it's astonishing to me in the three miles that I walk every morning to see the blatant disregard for speed limits, stop signs. This morning, my sister and I were walking to Fort Stillicum Park at one of the designated crosswalks, pushed the light to activate, and a person just drove right through while we were standing there ready to walk. And so I, not coming just to complain, I want to say I'm willing to work with a committee. Like, what can we do to put the word out to people that you're supposed to stop at a stop sign? If it says twenty-five, you should be going twenty-five. You shouldn't be going fifty. I mean, it's on the Washington Department of Transportation website. They have that if a person is struck with a vehicle traveling at thirty miles an hour, they have a fifty percent chance of dying. And so when we're going twenty-five, it's still up there, you know, for a chance to. So I would like to know, can we put some signs out? I mean, all I'll wear a T-shirt that says, stop at the stop sign. It's the law because I'm outside, you know, walking every day and even though I know I'm walking in a limited area of Lakewood, I'm pretty sure based on discussions with people that we meet at the dog park, that this is kind of systemic, that a lot of people are experiencing people not stopping, you know, going through red lights, not stopping for pedestrians who are standing at a corner clearly wanting to cross. So just, um, hoping for maybe some feedback. Again, I, I would very willingly give time to, you know, stand on a corner to have a sign that says, remember to stop, it's the law, because we keep putting all these things out there for our community to pay attention to and I'm not seeing that that is happening. And so I would like to be part of a solution, a proactive solution, not reactive, because, you know, some old lady like me was walking her dog and they, I got hit in the crosswalk with the lights flashing. So, um, just offerings, uh, anything that we can do as a community to try to improve the, the traffic situation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And we did get your written comment.
Yes.
Yeah, as well. Thank you. Next, Christina Manetti.
Hello. Uh, first I'd like to ask that council members listen to the public commenters when they're speaking, even if it's on Zoom, because I noticed that there was a conversation going on during the Zoom comments. So that would be nice if you would show respect to the people who are speaking. My name is Christina Manetti. I live in Lakewood. Um, as far as, um, while I'm here this evening, of course, to provide you with some observations regarding Lakewood's environment and specifically related to attitudes here towards environmental protection. During one of the last council meetings, uh, in, uh, August, I guess, Mayor Wayland reported at the end of the meeting in an alarmist tone, understandably, rather, that not one but two oaks had fallen down over the previous weekend. Instead of explain about the phenomenon about sudden limb drop, limb drop, that this happens at the end of drought periods, often in late summer. I know, uh, Professor Wayland, I wanted to call you again. He did say that there were two entire trees and sometimes it looks like an entire tree. I mean, maybe it was, I didn't see them, but I, in Dour Elementary, it looked like an entire tree fell down, but it was just one branch. So if anyone has pictures of that, I'd love to see them. Anyway, um, it, yeah, any tree, yeah, he repeated that oaks are dangerous. They can be dangerous no matter how much we adore them. I think he used that word. Yes, any tree is dangerous. I mean, any big one, right? Small ones aren't really that dangerous, but anyway, is it really useful to stress specifically how dangerous oaks are? When it's critical that the city encourage their protection, it's a keystone species. They're being lost. They take very long to grow. Now people can point to the mayor's admonitions when asking for a danger tree removal permit. Was that the idea? But Mayor Wayland said they're dangerous. I want to cut it down. The city has not done enough to encourage environmental awareness, uh, and care, a sense of environmental awareness and care in the city. Not only does the city not have even an Earth Day commemoration, because I don't know, the earth is too political, I guess. The city seems to shy away from anything that would look like it's fostering environmentalism among its residents, except for the garbage pickup day that should be on Earth Day. Um, this is, I mean, it is on Earth Day, but it's called, you know, like Parks Appreciation or something. So this is something the city really needs to actively encourage, because it's apparent that people are expressing environmental sentiments and are being, you know, beaten down for it. On Facebook recently, on the Lakewood page, someone innocently asked about why all those trees are being cut down along I five and someone immediately shot back, there are lots of other trees. Don't worry, you'll still have air to breathe or something like that, you know? It's like, and the person immediately said, oh, but I'm not a tree hugger. Like if it's something bad, the city should encourage tree huggers. They should cultivate tree huggers. We want more tree huggers, want people to protect the trees and grow trees and we want a big canopy. We don't want all these trees to be cut down. So please, we ask, please defend the tree huggers. Thank you. And the next comment is from, uh, also Christina Manetti, imagine that, from the Gary Oak Coalition in Lakewood. We were disturbed to hear that three hundred and ninety-four trees were going to be cut down this past week for the new walking path between Tillicum and Gravel Lake Drive. Washington Department of Transportation has told us that four Gary oaks, they first said three, but it's actually four. They wrote back and said, oh, we couldn't tell. One was so covered with ivy that we couldn't even tell it was an oak. So it's actually four. One of them has two trunks, one of which is thirty-eight inches in diameter at breast height, which means according to WDFW that it's a minimum of five hundred and seventy years, maximum of seven hundred and sixty or something? This is not me, this is WDFW. And it's a maximum of seven hundred and sixty years old. Even at its minimum age, this tree would have started to grow from an acorn inn fourteen fifty-five. Fourteen fifty-five at the earliest. In many other places, such old and valuable trees would be protected despite talk about an improved tree protection code. In Lakewood, no one seems to much value Gary oaks, even such old ones, even those identified by WDFW as being of particular value for wildlife and the ecosystem in general. If a protected Gary oak that is a minimum of five hundred and seventy years old is not protected, then really, how can one expect any tree to be protected in Lakewood? Supposedly this path is actually of public value. Right? The public good. If the city can eminent domain, the, the Mirjaleli family's entire house and property for four parking spaces, they could certainly eminent domain a sliver of a golf course, which would then protect the golf course from noise, uh, you know, and visually from the highway, the people who are walking on the path. Um, I'm glad to see that, um, council members are all awake and paying attention. Um, and also, of course, it would add to your tree canopy. You'd save those trees. You, it's gonna be hard to replace three hundred and ninety-four trees in your canopy cover. I mean, that's over a mile between there, right? That's just like a lot of trees to replace. So, um, W, uh, W, Wash Dot told us that it would be following Lakewood's code and replace each Gary oak no matter how many trunks or how old with actually more than two. The previous speaker said two, but Wash Dot told me they're going above and beyond and they're gonna replace them with three. If there are four oaks, they're gonna plant twelve baby trees. And more than one of those oaks is older than five hundred years. It's not just that one. The other one also has like super, you know, big trunk. So, I mean, how can a sapling replace, I mean, even three saplings, replace a tree five hundred and seven years old? And there's no guarantee that it's not gonna be cut down in ten years or three hundred years, because it takes three hundred years to get big. So the value of these oaks seems to be completely lost on Lakewood and we ask that Lakewood revisit and revise its tree protection code to truly protect our Gary oaks and other trees. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Helen Wagner is next.
This is right?
Yes, it is.
I'm Helen Wagner. I live in Lakewood. In the months since I last spoke, a new tree code should have helped, uh, avoid destruction of our canopy. Now I hear that if footpath between Tillicum and Gravel Lake is being built, it necessitates the destruction of three hundred and ninety-four trees, thirty-eight of them oaks. I realize that this may not be under the direct uh, council jurisdiction. I will certainly say that. We will, we will plant, quote, we will plant however many trees. It sounds as though it's probably more than the two I heard. A plant X number of oaks for everyone that we remove. That doesn't cut it. Because the baby oaks cannot equal the value of the huge ones that have matured over several centuries. These old trees provide valuable habitat for wildlife and many other benefits that have been noted tonight. We can mourn our trees or we can protect them. Certainly maintaining canopy is in everyone's best interest. Please, counsel, this is an issue which we must have, which you must have some influence over. The cutting of these trees is too easy. Commercial permits should be less accessible. Lakewood needs its trees and particularly its venerable oaks. Please be stewards. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual who's signed in to address council during the public comment period. If you'd like to come on up, notwithstanding the sign-in sheet, you're more than welcome to do so. Seeing none, then I'll declare the public comment period closed. And just as an aside, we do have on tonight's agenda an action item relating to the execution of a contract with EXP LLC for three hundred thousand dollars for services relating to creating the Lakewood Urban Forestry Program. So uh, based on the comments we heard tonight, that may be of interest to you if you wanna stay a little longer in the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, the consent agenda.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. B, approval of planes vouchers in the amount of five million, four hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and point six cents for the period of July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. C, in the amount of three million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for the period of July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. D, motion twenty twenty-five dash sixty, authorizing the execution of an interlocal water district for construction of a water main along a hundred and twelfth street between Bradley Lake Drive and Bridgeport Way. E, motion number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one, reappointing Jason Gerwin and Anessa McLendon to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September nineteenth, twenty twenty-eight. F, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, one Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented?
Remove approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Brand Center that we adopt a consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. Public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the ordinance amending chapter three point three eight of the Lakewood Municipal Code related to surface water management.
Thank you. And for this, prior to the public hearing, we'll have an overview from our Assistant Director, Angie Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Starting on page ninety-seven of your agenda packet is a draft ordinance subject to a public hearing this evening. The ordinance is a follow-up from your August eleventh study session in which we discussed amendments to chapter three point three eight of the Lakewood Municipal Code, specifically surface water management fees. In the draft proposal, no substantive policy changes are proposed, but housekeeping amendments in nature. Key revisions include fee updates, updates to reflect current twenty twenty-five stormwater fees and removes outdated table that ends, concludes in twenty twenty-four. There's also minor organizational changes and inclusion of flood control mitigation as allowed uses of the funds consistent with state law. In addition to that, we have clarifying language when a rate study should be conducted, which is proposed as every six years. And lastly, removes outdated exemptions that expired in twenty twenty-three. While tonight is scheduled to consider a public testimony on the draft ordinance, the council is tentatively scheduled to take action at your September fifteenth meeting. With that, Mr. Mayor, I have no further presentation items and happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, sir.
Thank you. And just note that we did have this subject before us on a study session.
That is correct, sir.
Plenty of opportunity to ask questions, but I'll open it up for limited questions of council of Ms. Silva, uh, for purposes of clarifying any of the information presented before I open it up to the public hearing. Any questions of council? Well, thank you, Ms. Silva. I know you've done yeoman's work on this with staff, so thanks for bringing it forward. This is the date set for the public hearing on ordinance, on the ordinance amending chapter three three eight of the Lakewood Municipal Code related to surface water management. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher at six thousand Main Street, Southwest in Lakewood, or via email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. For purposes of the record for tonight's public hearing, the clerk will read the names of any of those individuals who have submitted written testimony in advance.
Mayor Wayland, we received no testimony in advance of this evening's public hearing.
Thank you. Those members of the audience, both virtual and in person, who wish to provide testimony, your testimony is limited to three minutes per person. We simply ask that you state your name and residence for the record, such as Ryan Pearson, Lakewood, Washington. Again, if you'd like to present live virtual testimony, please join us with the Zoom meeting by calling the number two five three two one five eight seven eight two, enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. And upon entering the room, please use the raise the hand feature so we know to call on you for your comments and testimony during this public hearing. So I'll first turn to the sign-in sheet and I have Casey Crook with an address on file uh, indicating that she did not wish to speak, but you're certainly welcome to if you'd like to. You're more than welcome. Thank you for coming. Any other members of the audience today that would like to provide public testimony during this public hearing? Seeing none in the audience, we'll turn to those who may be appearing virtually. Madam Clerk, do we have any hands raised to provide testimony during this public hearing on ordinance amending chapter three point three eight of the Lakewood Municipal Code related to surface water management? Very good. I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'll now turn to looks like new business. We have no unfinished business, so we have motion twenty twenty-five dash six two. Madam Clerk.
Motion number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two, authorizing the execution of an agreement with EXP LLC in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to assist with HB eleven eighty-one requirements.
Thank you. And again, for this, I'll call on our Assistant Director, Angie Silva, to provide some additional information.
Happy to do so. The proposed action before you is recommending approval of a contract for three hundred thousand dollars, again with EXP LLC. Through a competitive selection process, this contract is a multi-year and multi-phased approach as part of the city's natural environment and climate change program briefed back in February. The contract is intended to be funded by two eligible funding sources and key elements of the contract include engagement and facilitation service, uh, a diverse panel of technical experts as part of an ad hoc climate advisory team. The launching of the urban forestry plan through integrating of the city's existing forty percent tree canopy goals as well as development, uh, community initiatives such as plantings, as well as ten-year, um, program implementation efforts, including integrating forestry, climate resiliency, energy efficiency, um, including funding strategies, evaluation framework and the like. And last but not least, near-term, three to five-year, uh, work plan items, which should consolidate and prioritize actions from existing city policies as it relates to urban forestry and climate change. State law mandates that were adopted in twenty twenty-three as part of House Bill eleven eighty-one, which is due in June of twenty twenty-nine, as well as regional greenhouse gas emission reduction goals and inventory requirements, as well as, uh, sequestration of reduction targets related to reducing our overall greenhouse, um, gas emissions within the city itself. This phased contract is a combination of meeting new state laws in HB eleven eighty-one to address climate change that is due by the city of Lakewood, but every municipality and county in Pierce County, as well as integrating several city-initiated efforts that started in twenty twenty-two, including more recently back in your February briefing, uh, the city's, uh, tree canopy inventory that was briefed as part of the overall, uh, program element. With that, sir, I'm happy to answer any questions this body may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Brand Center.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Silva, I'm concerned about the, the manner in which the contract is being funded. That, uh, you know, council looked at climate change issues back when we were trying to decide what to do with back when we were trying to decide what to do with the OVMA funds. And we authorized an amount of money to go towards dealing with some climate change issues. And as you described them, that we were, at that particular time, we were particularly concerned about climate change issues that related to primarily energy efficiency and in traffic carbon monoxide issues to be able to go and do that. And that goes back to when we inserted into the comprehensive plan, you know, four plus years ago, a climate change program and actually had a three-year work plan to work on on climate change to be able to go and do that. So the majority of the work in both in the House bill that you referenced, 1181, and other things really have to do with emissions and some things to do that. But I'm concerned that the proposal is he looks to take 20% of the balance that exists in the city's tree fund and use it for this contract in addition to the OVMA funds. And there is one task that relates to the putting the in place and getting the urban forestry program going. But I also note that in this contract, it's in that getting that going is included and mentioned in the 10-year implementation plan. And it isn't mentioned in the three-year work plan. And in fact, back when we first did the climate change accent in to do that, and it was there've been a lot of staff changes in that period of time. But the original work plan for climate change that was presented to council didn't include an urban forestry program. It was, it was at the meeting where we were approving the program that we added one additional item to the work plan, which was to get the urban forestry plan going. And it became the 16th or 15th item on that particular work plan that was working through. So I'm concerned that we were using a significant amount of the tree fund above what the contract says is specifically going to be used for the tree fund, the $60,000. But instead, we're going to use $110,000 to be able to fund this contract when the the House bill that the contract is primarily focused on implementing is not at all focused on trees and tree preservation. That, that I sort of, and so I'm sort of wondering about what is the nexus? And I was told there's a nexus between climate change and the urban forestry program and the tree fund that justifies that significant investment by the tree fund in this contract because of some elements in the other tasks. But I'm having trouble seeing any nexus other than the one task that specifically relates to trees of being significant enough to justify essentially paying, using almost twice as much tree fund money as is specified up as being focused on trees. And so I'm sort of wondering what the logic about choosing that funding source was and how this is really going to benefit the way the contract is structured, the urban forestry program. And it goes along with some of the comments that we've heard tonight.
I've got Ms. Silva and Ms. Spear who want to address that question.
I'll go first. I know Tiffany's in transit to or at the Planning Directors Conference. But going back to 2022, so promoting urban forestry management and master reforestation has been on the city's work plan for climate change actions since 2022. So it's not a new topic. It's recognizing forestry, trees are interrelated in how we combat the impacts of climate change within our communities worldwide, nationwide, but also here locally. As it relates to the nexus itself, as you pointed out, council member, 190,000 of the funds identified for the contract were designated through ARPA funds, where the remaining 110,000 is tree funds. A snapshot of the tree fund balance was a little over half a million dollars, so this is not taking a significant chunk of that. Our code allows the use of the tree funds for scientific research, community planting initiatives, et cetera. Third point that you brought up is the nexus as it relates to House Bill 1181. And climate change, resiliency in urban forestry under HB 1181 is intertwined. So HB 1181 requires cities and counties to include climate change and resiliency elements in your comprehensive plan. That's all due for our jurisdiction in 2029, but it takes work to do so. So tree preservation and urban forestry policies in our current comprehensive plan but may have to be expanded to meet minimum mandated requirements that support absorbing carbon dioxide, as you mentioned, through sequestration, reducing urban heat island effects, managing stormwater through infiltration. But lastly, improving our air quality and public health outcomes. That is directly related and nexus to HB 1181 and many of the elements that bill is requiring us to look at. What this contract is, is a multi-phased, multi-year effort to take bits of what we are required to do, what we're mandated to do by 2029. This is not the end all be all. It is a start of a lot of stuff.
Well, I guess that I wouldn't I'm not disagreeing that working on an urban forestry program, increasing the tree canopy and that that has positive impacts in terms of mitigating climate change. But I think that there are also, if you look at the work plan that we had on climate change, the vast majority of it didn't relate to that. It related to efficiencies that related to buildings and vehicles and being able to go and do that. So while we were using, as you say, $190,000 of ARPA funds, which financially I recognize was sort of at the last minute, we had to figure out what to do with them because they, we had to commit them to something. But my, and I don't object to using some tree fund money because there are elements in this contract that will relate to it. But I disagree that taking $110,000 out of the tree fund is not significant. I think it's more than 20% of the balance in the tree fund that we're going to spend over the next three years that will not result in any trees at all being planted. The money won't be used for that. And in the and in the list of allowable uses of the tree fund, and there are created nursery and planting trees and doing things. But we really get down to the justification for using the money above the $65,000 that particularly relates to planning for trees falls onto this general idea about, and any other good idea that the council thinks is a good idea. Okay. And I don't think spending, and I know it's the $60,000 and even, even $70,000 from the tree fund to go towards this contract because as you say, there are some other nuances, but I think that they're very tangential. Doesn't make sense, particularly when the contract is not, does not have a focus on getting an urban forestry program started in three years. It hasn't supposed to getting an urban forestry program up and running in 10 years. Okay, which is too long, in my view. Okay, I think that we want to go and do that. And we'll end up spending more money because I view the tree fund somewhat like the ordinance that we dispassed or that we just had the public hearing on. That has to do with the stormwater retention fund.
If you've got some questions from Ms. Silva, let's ask the questions to her. But if we have general discussion, let's do it with you.
Okay, I guess what other sources other than the tree fund were considered?
I want to get the questions.
Trying to decide how to fund this contract.
So think back in February, council member, part of that, and I know Tiffany has her hand raised. Part of that briefing was recognizing the state did have set aside non-competitive HB 1181 funds for jurisdictions to pursue many of the requirements of that legislation. Unfortunately, due to the budget constraints of the state, they pulled back that funding and really through the Department of Commerce is focused on getting grants for jurisdictions are mandated to complete their periodic update to their comprehensive plan this year and next year first before they will reopen that eligibility of funds. They have promised those funds will be available as we quickly try to get to the 2029 deadline. With that, I know Ms. Spears has her hand raised. We'll allow her to provide some further feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Tiffany Spear, and I apologize for not being there in person. So to clarify a little bit more, there was originally the 89-item work plan identified as an implementation of the Energy and Climate Change Chapter that was adopted in 2021 by the city council. We fast-forwarded to 2025 where that plan is now obsolete, if you will. The three years it was set for has expired. And so it's time to redo that regardless of the conversation happening tonight. But the intention behind the creation of the climate advisory team is to assist with urban forestry per council amendment, sorry, council adopted policies in the comprehensive plan. It is to work with what is needed to be accomplished, as Ms. Silva has said, by mid-2029 to fully comply with House Bill 1181. And that does include as a state requirement to have an urban forestry program in place. So we are now operating as a city with our own council-adopted voluntary tree canopy cover goal, as well as the desire to create and maintain an urban forestry program. But now we also have House Bill 1181 requiring that to be in place by mid-2029. The 89-item three-year work plan is going to be the first thing that that climate advisory team looks at. They're going to update it, see what has been completed because a number of the items have been, but there are a number that have not. And so taking a look at what has happened since that was adopted originally with changes again to state or federal laws, but also changed conditions in the city as to where the city should prioritize its work over the next three or five or 10-year period. So the funding that came out of the tree mitigation fund, this is not only item number nine related to the other purposes identified by council. It's also number six, implementation of a tree canopy monitoring program. It's urban forestry education because the intention of the city at this point at least is to say, general public, we need your help. The city can do what it can do, but it won't fully accomplish the goal adopted by the city without your help. And it will be also the maintaining and preservation of wooded areas within the city. So all of those things would be funded with tree mitigation dollars. The ARPA funds that were adopted through motion 2023-55, that was actually a total of $300. 150,000 have been spent already on the tree survey that was conducted last year. And now that we've got the data, now is the chance to use the rest of those funds to start implementing a program based on that data. So hopefully, the thought process makes sense between using both tree mitigation dollars and ARPA funds, all to help not only with the city's own adopted goals for urban forestry, but also now compliance with 1181, which also requires again an urban forestry program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Any other specific questions of Ms. Silva? Otherwise, I'll need to call for a motion, see if we can get some discussion on the table. Any other questions for Ms. Silva? Great. Okay, do we have, for purposes of getting this on the table for discussion, a motion, a second, to adopt motion 2025-62, authorizing the execution of an agreement with EXP LLC in the amount of 300,000 to assist with HB 1181 requirements? Second, it moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt motion 2025-62. Discussion. Mr. Bran Center.
Mr. Mayor, I am supportive of awarding the contract. It does a lot of things over time and gets us to a place that the state requires us to be with respect to House Bill 1181. And it will move us forward with some other things. I think that my sole concern has to do with that I think that over 20% of the dollars in the tree fund being dedicated to this contract is excessive. However, I don't see I don't have an alternative to propose. Okay, so I am going to vote to approve awarding the contract because I think that the work in the contract is necessary. I think though that the the easy route of replacing the anticipated money from the state just going to the tree fund because it's there as if it's a slush fund. And then there's a provision that says, well, the council can use the money for a good idea is is, I'm uncomfortable with that. But again, I don't have an alternative to it. I don't want that to be construed that I'm not supportive of aggressively moving on increasing the tree canopy to include planting new trees and preserving where it makes sense, existing trees. Okay. But that, you know, it's a I think that in the future, we really need to look to make sure that the tree fund is managed somewhat more like the surface water management funds. The surface water management, there are many projects, road projects and other projects where there's a surface water management thing and we we do a good job of using those funds for those portions of projects that can clearly be seen as falling in that vein. I think we should do the same with tree fund dollars where we do, where we have parks projects and we have road projects and things of where we're trying to do things with trees to be able to go and do that. And you know, it's not just exclusively have just a tree project in funded. It's like other projects that have a tree component. I'm concerned that I just don't see this contract meeting that standard for me. But I do see the contract as necessary and if some money that was anticipated from the state didn't appear back when we were discussing doing this. This is the way to do that. I would hope that maybe at some point in time as this contract moves forward over three years, if some money from the state that can be used to towards this contract, that maybe some of the funding that were anticipated coming from the tree fund can be replaced there and actually move forward with the implementation of urban forestry and some of our goals regarding trees and tree canopy, particularly in parts of the city where tree canopy is deficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Any other comments or discussion? I too am supportive of the project, you know, in light of the public comment tonight. It is a little curious. And we're trying to protect the tree canopy by throwing another 300 grand at a, a process and a study when we've got washed out, taking down a bunch of trees. Perhaps with some review of the city and its staff, I don't know. One wonders if they would have taken as much attention to detail as our own staff did on the interlocking project to save as many trees as they could. But it just is an interesting set of circumstances tonight. All in favor of motion 2025-62, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion 2025-62 has been adopted. We now turn to reports by the city manager. Mr. Russell, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Got to say, first meeting I've been at in my career that I received a flower and chocolate. So I'm all in.
That's good.
You know, obviously, as you mentioned, first meeting here, getting feet underneath me, many things the same, many things are different in every municipality. For example, I'm used to being on that side, so I'm getting a little pink in my neck here tonight looking this way, but I'll adapt to that, as will many other items. Normally use this item to go over update upcoming agenda items, but as I was mentioning earlier, our city clerk does a wonderful job, probably better than any municipality I've been in in terms of putting our agenda well in advance on the website, giving the public a lot of advance of knowing what things are coming up. So really appreciate that aspect that I've come to be or come to see. Also, we'll use this time in the future for various updates that are good to get out to the council and to the public on initiatives or any other items that are of timely importance. But as we're getting used to everything here in the city of Lakewood, those will come in the future. And you know, we go over agenda items during this time, so I'll hit the items coming up September before I turn it back over to you, Your Honor. September 6th, we have the Garden Club's 100th anniversary, also the beloved community ribbon cutting, and the Fiesta de la Familia, which we heard about tonight. September 7th, the Central Back to School Event. September 9th, Telecom Neighborhood Association Meeting. The 11th, also heard about the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony at Reflection Park. September 15th, we have a public art reception here at City Hall. 16th, the Assumption of Responsibility at the Joint Base Lewis McCord for CSM Ronald Hansen. 16th, also have the Fort Silicon Neighborhood Association Meeting. The 18th, American Lake Arc Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. September 23rd, the, and I hope I'm going to pronounce it right, the Danzow Contingency, one of our sister cities, will be present. We have an agenda being prepared for council related to that. September 24th, the Mayor's Coffee House, which I believe I'm on the agenda for that item, so I'll try and make sure to be at that one. And September 24th, the Air Force Ball. Happy to answer any other questions you have, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Any questions? How was the first week? That's the obvious question.
This is really good. I say, spend a lot of time meeting as many as I can internally and outside the organization, just trying to hit everything that I possibly can, getting used to giving speeches on the fly whenever I'm at one of those meetings. Sometimes called upon to do a little bit of presentation, which is great, hearing from, you know, constituents about concerns, about good things they're seeing, things they'd like to see, hearing backgrounds, just different perspectives all across the city. Been a really great week, very, very enjoyable time.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here and look forward to many, many, many meetings together. Okay, if there are no other questions for Mr. Russell, we'll turn to council comments. Mr. Bokey, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hope everyone enjoyed their holiday weekend. We have Planning Commission is back in action and they're going to start talking about amendments and whatnot. Big, big meeting. Really looking forward to Fiesta de la Familia. Great event, really, really well done. And I, I think the, the, a lot of people, a lot of people worked very hard on that event and I think it did very well last year and I'm hopeful this year. I do want to address, or I want us to maybe address the remarks by both Ms. Winter and Mr. Oaks. We kind of keep hearing about traffic enforcement, so I'll just, I'll just leave those remarks at that, that I know the chief addressed that the other night at the desserts in the driveway, but this is, is something that just kind of continually comes up. I do worry about Mr. Oaks. He's caught in some kind of bureaucratic hell, right? So it's not, is it a huge issue? Well, maybe not a huge issue, but it's one of those things. He keeps getting letters saying he's unauthorized and it's just one of those inconveniences that shouldn't really happen or should have been taken care of the first time. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can see some action on that and I just bring it up so that the city manager can, can jump on that because it's those kind of things that just those, those daily annoyances that people have to put up with that should, should get solved. And it's not, you know, the fact that people aren't there to talk to them or they tell them, oh yeah, those will take care of it, that, that's not good enough. So we, we need to figure out a way to, to fix that. Otherwise, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
No order tonight.
Exactly.
Random. Well, I went to the historic Fort Silicon sign dedication a couple Tuesdays, a couple Tuesdays or Wednesdays ago. And that was the first time I had been there, so that was kind of a new learning experience for me. And lots of the folks there were super excited about the, the volunteer work that, that goes on there. They had a new sign created that's going to be posted out in front of one of the buildings there and lots of great information on it, kind of gives you the history of the whole Fort Silicon. So it was, that was a fun little sign unveiled to go to. And then last weekend, went to the Buffalo Soldiers game at the, or the event at the, at the Rainiers Stadium there and lots of, lots of fun for family and kids had a blast at the, the stuff out in the parking lot and had some food and drinks and ate some peanuts and watched some softball. So it was a, it was pretty fun. Other, yeah, one of the comments about, I'll, I'll just kind of add on to Mr. Bokey's comments about the, the traffic and stuff. And I think last year, about this time, or maybe even just before school had started, the Lakewood Police Department put out a little video about school zones and, you know, kind of the kids are going to be back walking. And I think it'd be good to, to do another, some, you know, something similar to that and maybe emphasize not just the school zones, but to, you know, there's pedestrian crossings and there's other things and there's, you know, we're getting into the, the school year where we can expect to see a lot more people wandering around the streets and, you know, getting home and getting back to school and stuff. So just emphasizing that safety would be a, a good thing. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been busy around Lakewood last couple of weeks. Lots of ribbon cuttings and openings and park things. And, and I too went to the Buffalo Soldier and it was game, it was yesterday. So I thought it was, it was yesterday, it was really great. They had a lot of really great displays and things to read about Buffalo Soldiers and all the activities and the actual baseball games. We stayed for both of them and they were excellent. So I encourage everyone next year to, to take part in that. Also, I want to thank our youth council. It was their first meeting tonight, so that was great to see such a large group of youth and how it's grown exponentially throughout the years. I'm really excited to see what they are going to be doing. I did attend their kickoff that was mentioned and Deputy Mayor Moss and I were there. And so it was great to see all the kids and say hi and just really connect with them and talk about them, what they would like to see for the upcoming year. So I really appreciate that also. I think that's pretty much it. Oh, looking forward to Fiesta de la Familia on Saturday. It's just a fantastic event and that is another event that our staff here at the city of Lakewood have really just gone above and beyond and grown and grown and grown. So I think that will be just a fantastic event honoring all the different cultures. I know that there's going to be a mural dedication also over at, I think, at the barn at Fort Silicon for our beloved community, the mural that's on the side of that barn around 12, 12:15, I'm not sure. But I'm looking forward to just the whole day. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to echo one of Mr. Bokey's remarks. I, I think that certainly when we put in place the ordinance that talked about having a fee for alarm systems, being able to go and do that, we, we did not envision medical alerts and, 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 and things like this. And, you know, I don't know where that interpretation of the ordinance that we put in place arrived, whether it, it, it stems from something that internally to the city or whether it stems from something with the contractor in Texas that manages that for us, being, being able, being able to go and do that. But I, I certainly think it's something to do that. And if there is some unfortunate wording in our ordinance that captures those things, then we should be fixing that. I, I did attend the South Sound 911 Board Meeting since our last meeting together. And I can report to you that the, the South Sound 911 Board made a selection to, to offer a candidate for a new executive director who would be Mr. Kevin Yamamoto. And Mr. Yamamoto is, Ben serving as the interim executive director during the, the search process. And he is a, formerly the city manager for the city of, of, of Wallop. And, and the, and the South Sound 911 Board was both impressed with his performance as an interim manager as well as where he is able to go and do that. You know, they, they receive candidates from multiple states, but that, you know, I, I think they, they, they've made a good choice. The other thing that the South Sound 911 Board is that they approved their 2026 budget and they, they approve it in that early window so that all the other jurisdictions in the counties such as Lakewood have the budget, which includes the allocation costs that will go in, in Lakewood's allocation costs from 2026 will be about 5% below what they were for, for 2025 due to some shifting of some, some funds to help offset allocations as, as well as a major capital project that was, came in under budget. And so the money could be shifted there to be able to go that and not have to go to police departments and fire departments for, for, for additional money to be able to go and do that. So, you know, that, that sort of works, works to our advantage and has to do with the fact that, that they have financial policies that cause them to look, look at things that way rather than squirreling away cash to be able to go and do that. One other event that I attended that I think is a cost for the city was the groundbreaking for a forest of utility poles at Clover Park Technical College to go with a brand new program that they have to train utility linemen. And they're, then they're putting them up and I, that was something that I was glad to see. One is, that is a profession that is a, the quote, living wage jobs to be able to go and do that. And I know that from seven years ago, when I was still working in the community and technical college system and, and made an effort to get a program like that started, being able to go and do that, it was very, very difficult to get the coordination with all of the various unions that were involved in apprenticeships across that area. So I think that Clover Park Technical College has found a way to navigate through that, that minefield to have both an entry level program and then some continuing level certificates that will help people deal with working in, working overhead. Okay, and it is utility lineman to do that, but it also involves people who work with, in trees and, 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 and other things that are being able to go and do that. And to get people who are scared of heights to be not scared of heights and, and have the skills to be able to do those sorts of things. So, so, and, and, and it's, 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 it's the, it's the only community college in the state that will, that will, that will have a program like that. And, and that, that goes towards the reputation of Lakewood's educational institutions of being able to go and do that, not to do that. But I just have one more thing, Mr. Mayor, that I think it is perhaps important for us to discuss because at our, you know, we, at our last two meetings, we have heard input regarding impromptu activities that, that occurred on Motor Avenue and in the Colonial Plaza that were annoying nuisances and somewhat things that going on and that residents look to do that. And we, well, we, we did ask for some recommendations as to what could be done. And we did receive an email from the then interim city manager about proposed steps that could taken. But I, I have to say that the, the, the steps that were proposed, I think are not good first steps. I, I think that the, the idea of addressing this and immediately going to physical barriers like speed bumps and curbs and, and things before we work of dealing with the car clubs involved and looking at and trying to get some voluntary compliance and of looking at our own nuisance code to see if, if, if we can define these as a nuisances that would provide some way to do some enforcement action should another events erupt again. The proposal for speed bumps particularly is going to be, have less an impact on the people who have done this in the past than it will for the hundreds of drivers every week that drive that road. You know, it, it, it's, 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 it's a street when there's not another thing going on. It's the continuation of Mount to Home and Drive. It, it gets, it gets, it gets a lot of use, okay? And putting speed bumps on it is more of a nuisance to our residents who use that than it would be in value as a deterrent to someone to, to be there. I think the initial steps, there are some initial steps to do that. And then the idea of putting up signage for timed parking, you know, timed parking means you can't enforce that in the midst of a problem going on because you've got to somehow, somehow document when a person parked and then is that car still in that space today? And then, then, that doesn't seem to me to be a solution. So I think that there is some, some softer things that we can do to try to bring some peace and quiet to that, but, 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 but allow the space to go on. And that if there are going to be capital movements, I think that that's perhaps something that is in the realm of the master plan for the plaza and the adjacent park to be able to go and, and, and look at it. So I'd really like to not look at the physical barrier type things to do that and, 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 and look more at, is there something we can do with, in terms of, of, of an enforcement language in an ordinance that would provide the, a tool that, uh, it, it's kind of like the ordinance that we, that we passed regarding camping or being on sidewalks. We haven't actually had to, we've been able to approach a lot of people and get voluntary compliance with that to be able to go into. And I think that should be this initial strategy that we have. And then of course, the other strategy is that we need to clean up the, the fact of graffiti caused by the,
By the drivers.
Yeah. But I, you know, I, 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 I certainly like to give, uh, to take another look at that and decide if there is some guidance as a council we might be able to give the city manager.
Very good. Echo your comments on that. I think that one of the simple things we can do is just have more active police presence when we know that there's going to be an event, because I think we got a poster that, that advertised the event. We might invite ourselves to show up and kind of keep activity abey. Plus, I don't know where we are and getting a trespass order if we already have that, but that would help us, you know, deal with folks who are doing naughty activity by climbing on the roof and, you know, creating a ruckus there. It's not as much street racing as it is a congregate gathering of boisterous activity that shouldn't be in that particular location without a permit. So.
Your Honor, if I may, so is, is council desiring an ordinance to come back? Cause in looking at it.
If, if we.
It's got to be tightened up.
Yeah.
Because it is enforcement that deters, deters that type of activity. You know, I've somewhat familiar with it in other lives and, and, and really when you're looking at that type of thing. So if that's a desire of council to come back with language of a potential ordinance that would help provide a tool that comes in, like I say, I, I think it's the one component well in terms of you don't always have to engage it. But if you have that to address it, you, you may be able to deter that type of activity.
Got it. And I think, I don't know if we've got unlawful race attendance. Councilmember Bell is reflecting on an ordinance they have in Kent that deals with street racing and unlawful race attendance as a misdemeanor. So that might be some component of what you're chatting about there, city manager.
Yeah, I think what actually what we're looking at is, uh, assembly for exhibition. Because a lot of times they're not racing.
Right.
You know, I've dealt with revving of engines on, on a main street corridor or excessive noise through modification of a vehicle. But I think it have to, from our current structure, you'd have to probably be looking at assembly or purposes of exhibition.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's exactly what this code references. Prohibits attending unlawful race event with intent to observe, support, or encourage it. So good thoughts. We appreciate that. If you want to bring something back, that would be great. And then in terms of, of council comments, Deputy Mayor, you're next. I would never forget you. Would never forget you.
Yes, you did once.
Only once. Almost as bad as me calling Gary Oaks dangerous, Deputy Mayor, for me to forget you.
I did attend the Culver Park Technical College. It was called the Pole Groundbreaking. And it's a cross from Harrison Prep. So if you get a chance to go by and take a look at it, it's a huge electrical poles. And it was impressive, the number of utility companies that came together to make that happen. So it's a great program for the college and I think a good paying jobs in the end for that. So that was great. That was great. Lots of groundbreaking was really nice. Enjoyed the conversations and the excitement of the people that are involved there. The N Brothers Ribbon Cutting was nice. Our mayor got to serve. Did a great job. Got to eat too.
Yeah, got to eat as well.
APCC Grant had a great event last week. The building is absolutely beautiful. It is amazing. I, I was just very much impressed with that. Last week I did, uh, the last time we met, I did say that I was going to go to Springbrook to look at the gardens. I did go out there. It was very quiet, very clean. And I did see, it was only three bins that I saw that were in bad shape. And they were the sunflower beds. There was three of those, a big sunflower bed. The rest of the beds looked great. So I didn't see a problem there, but they could have been cleaned up afterwards. The traffic issue is again, something that I would appreciate seeing something being done about with the, it's, people are just in a hurry now and they don't have, they don't stop and think before they act. And then they're sorry when something happens. So I've seen so many incidents that happen just because they impatient. I just want to go. So, and we do have a lot of seniors walking in our area. So we've got to be careful of that. And then we'll be at the event on Saturday and the ribbon cutting of the beloved community as well. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for not forgetting me.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Book, or Mr. Branstadter.
If I could just comment on, on, on the traffic thing is, is, is Smush and, and as Councilmember Boki mentioned is in the areas that are mentioned, I, I do a lot of walking in those areas. It's just something I do to recreate or, or, or try to get away or be able to go and do that. And over the past 15 years, this is, this is a kind of common theme. It comes back again and again and again. And that very often, then we have those sorts of problem areas that are identified that, and then speed studies and things are done. Yeah. It's determined that the, it's, it's, people remember the cars that really ignored them and that are, yeah. But that they forget about the other 50 cars that just drove by traveling. Maybe not at the speed limit, but not that much, much over the speed limit to be able to go and do that. So there is, there's a limit to what we can do. I think that, 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 that the most effective things are, is that, you know, we, we, we had a whole series of time when the traffic unit was at full strength of where they would actually publish and say, we're going to be on Angle Lane in Elwood for these days enforcing speeding. And they would, they would catch speeders. Okay. They would be able to go in. But the publicity of that was very effective and, and it, it wears off after a while. Okay. To, to be able to go and do that, that way, you know, currently Angle Lane Veterans Drive seems to be in, you know, the common, most common things to be, to be able to go and do that. But I think that, you know, you, 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 there is no foolproof way to positively address that. And while I think that some people drive unsafely, we don't have a terrible accident history caused by that. I mean, I mean, and, and, and people equate loud cars with fast cars to be able to go, go, go and do that. So I think that Ms. Winter's comments about being willing to serve on a citizens group and that how group that we get together to discuss and actually get a clear understanding about how significant that issue is, is worth pursuing. You know, we did, we have done that with other things. I mean, four years ago, we put together an ADAC committee to deal with trees. We put together an ADAC committee along with the library district to deal with what.
We've got a public safety advisory committee. Maybe we task them with that as a work plan item.
You know, yeah, to, to be, be able to, to go and do that. But also allow for a, a body where people like Ms. Winter, who are both concerned but willing to be a part of the solution can participate. And I think we should take, take a look at trying to put something like that together rather than seven of us sitting here and saying, oh, how can we make everybody stop at all the red lights?
I was thinking, you know, it's difficult to go back and forth on public comment, but to invite her to their, her neighborhood association meeting, which would be the Fort Silicon Park one, to raise that concern and to invite her to galvanize some support. So maybe we can reach out and at least make sure she's aware. We have one coming up this month at the Fort Silicon Neighborhood Association meeting. I think that would be her particular one. Happy to invite her to that. That would be a good start. Yep. The other thing about traffic, and maybe this is a question from Ms. Walker, is, you know, the legislature passed that bit of legislation allowing more general purpose red light cameras outside of just school zones and other zones based on, you know, one per 10,000 population up to a certain limit. But you got to go through this justification process. Is that something worthy of us investing some resources in to do? Cause you have a certain number of police officers, they can only be, you know, they can, they can't be everywhere at once. Is it possible that another two or three general purpose speed enforcement cameras might be helpful in the right locations?
Mayor Whelan, I think that's a question that's best posited to the chief. And so I'm sure that we will get back with him and report back to you. If you remember a year ago, we went through the new legislation at a city council meeting and adding cameras comes with all kinds of interesting aspects. It's not just the money. It's also the demographic studies that you have to do.
Oh, you have to go through a study.
Well, and you have to place cameras sort of equitably throughout the city. There's, there are just a lot of different aspects of that. I will tell you that in one of your upcoming meetings, and I think it might be next week, you're going to be getting a Veromobility contract for approval. We went through a period of month to month with Red Flex and the police have now asked to go ahead and renew the contract. That would keep you at the status quo of what you have now. But that also means that we're grandfathered in under the, you know, not having all the strings attached.
For those existing cameras. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Very good. Well, that's all things speed. In terms of activities, as all of you have indicated, it's been a busy couple of weeks. In terms of neighborhood association meetings, I went to the Silicon Community Association meeting on the 19th. I think Mr. Branstadter and I were there at that. The Tai Park Desserts on the Driveway, Mr. Boki and I made an appearance at that. And then we had the desserts on the driveway at Fort Silicon Park just this last week. So that was good on the neighborhood association side on transit. I was there on your behalf for Pierce Transit for their summit to discuss the World Cup opportunities coming to the South Sound Seattle area and all of us south of Seattle in 2026. That's going to be a big lift to make sure that we're able to accommodate that. Not only from a transit standpoint, but there's going to be just a lot of opportunity for all of us to share and some good economic development. So maybe something for us to noodle over as we get closer to the summer of 2026, well in advance of it, to plan for it. And just to alert our, our businesses and residents of, you know, not only the opportunities for traffic, but the opportunities for good and better restaurant attendance and the like. And then on the 25th, we had the Spanaway Transit Center Grand Opening Event, went out for that. So lots of good things. We will be the next major bus rapid transit route for Pierce Transit. Again, Lakewood, our Lakewood station here is the most active in the surface area in terms of transit stops. So we should get some good attention on that down the road. Ribbon cutting Northwest Brothers Bake Shop, Life Stance had an open house off of 75th. So those are both good events. Northwest Brothers is a, a nice BIPOC family that owns and operates that restaurant. Fantastic family and they're doing bang up business there and it was fun to see them do incredibly well. And then Life Stance is a new mental health care provider opened off of Bridgeport and 75th. They have 14 locations around the state. And this is their newest location they've opened. They've got space enough for I think 14 to 17 providers in there. And it's really, really, it was a beautiful facility. So I got to meet the regional manager there, good people. So good things happening, people coming in and doing, doing business in Lakewood. This past week I did the round table on a housing with Danny Heck, Lieutenant Governor and a bunch of planning policy folks. Ms. Silva was there and, and mayors from around the South Sound. They were trying to discuss impediments, if any, to conversion of commercial spaces to residential spaces in their locale. We just don't have that much inventory of empty commercial spaces. So we didn't have a lot to share or offer, except for some just impediments generally to, to housing. But, you know, Lakewood was represented. And then Fort Silicon Park Desserts on the Driveway, that was a great meeting again with the neighbors. And then the final two big events were the Los Angeles Grand Opening Ribbon Cutting of the new affordable housing project off of Gravel Lake Drive. That was a great event. And the Asia Pacific Cultural Center's beautiful new building on South Tacoma Way. So I had the chance to be one of the speakers there to welcome the crowd and to unveil the, the new building. So it was a good, busy two weeks. Anything else? We go to the order? All right. Well, we're adjourned. Thank you all.